Chambers.
President.
Dietz.
Here.
Foster.
Here.
Phillip.
Here.
Wallace. White.
Here.
Chairman Clifton.
Here.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, excuse those commissioners not present, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. If you would, please turn your cellphones off at this time. If you are here for item number two, a conditional use to allow car sales lot in a C4 zone located at 1415 West 36th, that item has been postponed, will not be heard today. Also postponed is item number four, to allow a cell tower in an R2 zone located on Walker's Corner Road in North Little Rock. That will not be heard today as well. With that, we'll move into our regular order of business. You have been submitted a copy of the minutes.
Hold it up here for me.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, be approved, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We'll go into the Development Review Committee. Mr. Don Chambers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Development Review Committee has considered item SD 2018-27 Douglas Dugan subdivision, Lot 1, replant of an industrial lot at 8205 Highway 70. The applicant was present, agreed to items one through 10 and subsections, and with that, the Development Review Committee recommends approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, this be approved as submitted. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this application? Any comments from any of the commissioners? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item B is SD 2018-28 Gregory Street Park Edition, Lot B, replant and site plan review of an industrial addition at 1400 Gregory Street. The applicant was present, agreed to items one through 11 and subsections. With that, the Development Review Committee recommends approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, that this application be approved as submitted. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this application? Any comments from any of the commissioners? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item C is SD 2018-29 Spring Hill Development Lots 10 and 11, Block 4, preliminary plat and site plan review of a medical clinic at the northeast corner of Spring Hill Drive and Stockton Drive. The applicant was present, agreed to items one through 13 and subsections, and with that, the Development Review Committee recommends approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, that this application be approved as submitted. Any comments from anyone in the audience? Comments from any of the commissioners on the application? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item D is SD 2018-31 Spring Hill Development Lot 11, Block 4, site plan review of a hotel located on Stockton Drive. The applicant was present, agreed to items one through 10 and subsections, and with that, the Development Review Committee recommends approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, that this application be approved as submitted. Any comments from anyone in the audience? Comments from any of the commissioners on the application? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item E is SD 2018-30 WNLR addition, Lot 2, preliminary plat and site plan review of a bank near the intersection of Mall Mel Boulevard and Paul Eels Drive. The applicant was present, agreed to items one through 11 and subsections, and with that, the Development Review Committee recommends approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, this application be approved as submitted. Any comments from anyone in the audience? Comments from any of the commissioners on the application? All in favor, aye? Opposed? Thank you.
Item F is SD 2018-32 Old Dominion Edition, Lot 1, preliminary plat of industrial lot located on Industry Drive. The applicant was present, agreed to items one through seven and subsections, and with that, the Development Review Committee recommends approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, this application be approved as submitted. Any comments from anyone in the audience? Comments from any of the commissioners? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item G is SD 2018-33 North Shore Business Park, Lot 10A, replant of an industrial lot located on North Shore Lane. The applicant was present, agreed to items one through three and subsections, and with that, the Development Review Committee recommends approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, the application be approved as submitted. Any comments from anyone in the audience? Any comments from any of the commissioners on the application? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item H is SD 2018-34 North Shore Business Park, Lot 10A, site plan review of an office building located on North Shore Lane. The applicant was present, agreed to items one through nine and subsections, and with that, the Development Review Committee recommends approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, this application be approved as submitted. Any comments from anyone in the audience? Any comments from any of the commissioners on the application? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
We don't have an agreement that Ms. Pulaski seconds everything. She's just really fast. Item I is SD 2018-35 Loves Country Store Edition, Tracks A and B, site plan review and expansion of a convenience store with fuel pumps and truck parking located at 11801I40. The applicant was present, agreed to items one through 10 and subsections, and with that, the Development Review Committee recommends approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, this application be approved as submitted. Any comments from anyone in the audience? Yes, ma'am, give us your name for the record, please.
My name is Libby Dugan. My husband was Bo Dugan, you knew him, but anyway, we have farmed all of that land back there for many, many years, and I've lived there for many, many years. I have a BSBA, I raise cattle, and I raise hay. And when the water falls, it's supposed to go south. It is backed up on me all the time. I had no idea any of this was happening. And so, I've spoken to Joe Smith, who I did have a couple of dates with when we were in college, but that was forty something years ago. But, and I've talked to Mr. Clam, and there is a, you know, water's been held on me. It kills my pastures, and it's killing my fences. And I'm not being ugly. I know that's a good piece of property, and somebody's gonna build something there, but I'm just saying, please stop backing water on me. And probably fifty to a hundred times a year, I get a tractor trailer rig down there that buries up on my farm and tears up everything. They never pay. North Rock cops are tired of coming down there. So, I'm asking for drainage, and I'm asking for signage. And I'm telling y'all, GPS shows that it goes down there, but it doesn't, and GPS doesn't listen to an old lady in Arkansas. Just saying.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Dugan. Mr. Chambers?
Yes, Ms. Dugan, prior to this property, you apparently owned your farm long before the development of this track.
Farm was there before the truck stopped.
So, before the truck stop was built, was there water backing up on your land?
No, sir.
Okay. So, what you're saying is that this development somehow or other, by their grading or omission of drainage or something, has caused a drainage problem?
Yes. And, and I, you know, my husband did all that, but he died, and so, I'm having to learn all this by the seat of my pants, but, you know, just, it, it never was built with a drainage system, and it needs to have drainage.
Let me ask this, and this is a question for staff. Normally, the city engineer assures that a development is not backing up water, you know, that water continues to flow the way it always flowed. Is this something we should refer to the city engineer for comment before we move forward? This is just information.
It's already been referred to him by the mayor, and the mayor's gonna make sure that's taken care of correctly.
Okay, so, even if we vote yes and approve this, the mayor is still going to make sure that, that life is better?
Everything you're approving meets all the ordinances.
Beats all ordinances?
Correct.
Well, it meets all ordinances, and, you know, I'm old, and I've dealt with a lot of government. If it doesn't meet the ordinance and it keeps backing water on me, what are y'all gonna do? Spank their little tiny hands? I mean, I, you know, I have found out, if it doesn't go in and the construction, getting it changed is really difficult, and I'm not, I'm not trying to be difficult, I'm just saying.
No, you're a very smart person.
Well, can you give us any filler information on this? I mean, it's been, obviously, we have a problem over there, and, and if the city engineers looked at it, and the mayor says it's gonna be taken care of, can you tell us anything about it?
I haven't been in on that loop of the meetings, other than this city engineer is aware of it, and they're, it's not gonna be built to cause any problems. So, I mean, we can postpone it if you want, and...
Well, and I'd also like to add that the five acres that they bought back...
Excuse me, just a minute, please.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought he was through.
Yeah. I mean, I don't, I don't think anything's gonna change, and you're right. You know, it already says meet the city engineer's requirements on what's going on, but, I mean, it's...
Okay, yes, ma'am.
The five acres that they bought behind, and they're gonna put ninety-one more parking spaces there, that's lowlands, and if I did that as a farmer, I would be hung up by my thumbs. I'm just saying, they're gonna build it up, and it's gonna back water on me. And I'm, you know...
Okay.
I'm, I'm giving you all information that y'all probably didn't know, is what I'm doing.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Foster?
Now, thank you for your comments. You know, we can't respond and act without people like yourself coming forward, so I appreciate you doing that.
I don't hear well.
Uh, thank you for coming and letting us know, you know. Let me ask you, is the applicant here?
Yes, sir.
We ask you a couple of questions, if you mind?
Excuse, Mr. Dugan.
Don't be talking to the landowner, I'm sorry.
Let him, let him come forward, please.
He's the engineer. He's the engineer. I don't know where they...
I'm Pat McGetrick, I am the engineer for Loves on this project. The initial Loves was built over thirty years ago, I believe, and it's been there that The, um, the slough that is to the east of us, which is the area that backs up, um, at the time we built this initial phase, we never did anything to that area. That's over five acre, I mean, it's over a thousand feet from the existing building that we put in, or they put in, thirty years ago. The drainage, the project we're doing now, we've met with the Corps, we reduced the area that we are going to be working in. The Corps has required us to leave about approximately an acre and a half undisturbed, which is one of the reasons we're back here, because we did change up the plan, reducing it to meet the Corps' requirement for the area. We also have, have told the city and working with the city engineer that we will put in detention requirements as city has or requires us to do, or give them in lieu contribution, which could be twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars that they could, and again, I don't know how they would use it, but they could use it to make improvements on the drainage. Again, that would be up to the city if they would take in lieu instead of actually putting in detention.
Okay.
Let me ask you this. Of all that you've just mentioned, how do you see that may help this lady's problem? Is it gonna help?
Well, if, I don't know if it'll ever, I don't think you can ever fix that problem. I don't think the drainage from that five acre, the existing Loves, that drainage is not the only thing causing it. What little drainage comes, I mean, there is drainage caused by that, but it's not causing twenty acres to back up and be flooded down there. The, the people that we bought the property from, that Loves bought the property from, gave thirty acres to the e, to the east and to the north to the Arkansas Drainage Conservation Service to maintain its natural condition. I believe they gave that to them about three years ago. So...
How does that sit in juxtaposition to her property?
It'd be north and west of her property.
Okay.
Question?
Uh, Ms. Chambers?
Uh, I understand the highway department is, is improving the interchange down there?
Yes, it's under construction now.
Will that have any benefit or improve any drainage down in that area? Wrong area?
It's, it's west of the crossing of the interstate that the slough crosses. The slough crosses to the east of us.
Is this a beaver problem?
That I don't know. I, I couldn't tell you. It may be, I, I just, I don't know.
You've studied the engineering, you've studied the map in that area, and the topo and the drainage. Is there a solution to this lady's problem?
Well, um, the, the, yes, there may, there may be to some extent. How much, I don't know. The channel that's, the slough to the, that is to the east could be cleaned out. The structure underneath the interstate that the, the slough goes across, that could be cleaned out. I don't know if it is backing up because there's problems with that structure underneath the interstate. I don't know if anybody's ever, if anybody's cleaned that channel out at the entrance to that structure going across the interstate, or down, or on the south side of the interstate. That, if that's plugged up down there, I mean, that could be causing the problems. I mean, I couldn't tell you exactly what was, and I can't tell you exactly if it would solve it.
Okay.
Can I ask you, Sean, is that something that you could coordinate with our city engineer to coordinate with the highway department?
Right.
Because I just don't like, you know, proving something that's gonna be, you know, is a problem, it's got looked over thirty years ago, I guess, let's don't do it again. So, how can we help this situation or get...
One of, one of the issues, or way to, we separated, there's a Track A and Track B, so Track A is the Loves, and Track B would be that ninety-one parking spots behind. So, right now, he's asking to get a permit for Track A for the Loves, and then once all the calculations come together for solving the issues, that will be done on Track B before they are allowed to do the parking lot back there. So, it might, the answer might be, half that lot back there is detention. But until they figure that out, we're not gonna really mess with Track B yet.
Well, I, is there something we could do to get our city engineer to coordinate with the highway department to make sure we're not...
Oh, definitely, yes.
You know, there's not a problem under the drainage structure underneath the interstate or on the other side of the interstate?
Yes.
How do, how do we go about facilitating that or initiating that?
We just ask, and, and Pat will get involved also.
Yeah, we'll be glad to work with the city and, and the highway department in any way we can to, we'll be glad to meet with the city, just work out a plan, and go out there and work with the highway department. Because it's, it's a benefit to us to have it worked out, so...
Well, it looks like to me that perhaps, like you mentioned, maybe the, instead of the lieu of fee, the detention may help in that area. Is your client amenable to doing, putting a detention pond in?
Either a detention pond or buried pipe underneath, yeah. Some detention facility, yes.
Let me ask...
Can we require that, Sean?
The city engineer can, yes. And I think that's, it may be worded that way, it says, well, again, it's talk about Track B, so we haven't really determined the outcome until the Corps of Engineer gets involved on Track B.
Because usually, we allow the applicant to do, do, do the detention or in lieu of. We give them the choice. But I guess, can we not give them a choice?
Correct, we can pick, in some cases, the city engineer has said, we want detention.
Okay, got you.
And the, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
The only reason I said in lieu is if they, if the city could use that money towards making, helping improvements, I'm, I'm, we're willing to go either way. I'm just saying that, uh, you may want to use that funding for making improvements to the ditch or whatever, so, oh, we can, you know.
I would not be in favor of allowing it in lieu of fee unless we got, I got assurances that it was gonna be spent for that problem.
Oh, yeah, I, I agree. That's the, that's the only way I would say that in lieu fee would be any good at all, if, if the city could work it just towards that one problem.
And that was my comment with, with the mayor getting involved, of directing that money to one source or one area.
Well, you kind of see where our...
Oh, yeah, I understand, yeah.
...in the kind of our pulse are, when you come back for that, you know, Track B, I guess it is, so, you know, we need to have these...
We'll, we'll work with the city on it.
Okay. We need to have this kind of buttoned up before we look at that, then. Thank you. Appreciate your willingness to work with us.
Oh, yeah.
Ms. Dugan, question. Have, have you ever spoken with any of the engineering department or the engineers on this project?
Yes, Michael Clam came out, and we visited, and he was like, mm, it's a problem. You can talk to the U.S. Post Office, that road is underwater lots. You know, I'm just, again, not being ugly, just finally saying something.
If you have, if you've been in conversations with them looking at this, what would be your solution to the problem?
I think it needs to drain out to the interstate, to one of those big ditches. It actually needs to drain under I-40 to the other end of the slough.
A good cleaning, in other words.
Yeah, probably a good cleaning would help. I mean, because people throw tires in there, and I know North Little Rock and Pulaski County street and bridge are tired of hearing from me. I'm on a first-name basis with Ricky Pretty. He is the beaver control guy for Pulaski County, if anybody ever needs to know. And we've killed lots of beavers out there, just, just saying.
Sean, you say that we are just acting on Track A, which is the original five acres for the Love now, and we're not acting on B?
Correct, but we, we address B because there's concerns about the, about the drainage.
But we're not passing B?
We're not passing B.
And B needs Corps of Engineers approval also, is that right?
So, so we'll, we'll be coming back. I mean, it could be all detention. So, I mean, we, we don't know yet, but it, we are addressing it at the moment with some future plan.
Dugan, do you understand, then, that we're, that we're working on the five-acre track that is the original Loves now, or Love now, and that we're not passing the ninety-one-acre parking lot now? Understand?
Yes, sir.
And would that be something that you would be, that you're wanting to work with the engineers to look at this and try to come to, everyone come to a satisfactory conclusion to it?
Yes. I am not trying to stop anything, like I've already said, I know it's worth a lot of money, but I'm just saying, you know, when water, when water's gotta go, it's gotta go, and if it doesn't go, it...
It stops up.
Okay.
It stops up, and that's, and that's been a problem. I didn't even know this was gonna happen until just a couple of weeks ago, so I'm kind of coming into this blind.
Okay. Ms. Foster?
You know, one more question. Track is, Track B being put off indefinitely, or is it a component of making this Track A development work? I mean, you know, I don't know.
Ms. Dugan, let, let him imagine, Ms. Dugan.
Separated to just make a problem go away is what I'm concerned about.
But, no, Loves originally started out with only Track B, basically, the add-on. They had the fire, which destroyed Loves, and they had to tear it, they want to get that back up as quickly as possible, the, the existing, on the existing five-acre site, which is Track A.
Okay.
And that goes, I mean, even if we don't get Track B, Track A is going back in.
So, that's what we're working on, Ms. Dugan, is that correct?
Correct. About a month, or not a month and a half, about a year and a half ago, we reviewed Track B. It went through, and you guys voted on it and everything, but the Corps of Engineer was holding it up, and then while that was happening, the store burnt. So, so we're sort of coming back just to look at the store part, and the B is still up in the air based on what we can find out to fix the problem.
Okay.
But you're gonna, your client is pursuing, moving forward on the development of Track B, is that correct?
Well, yeah, yes, he...
I mean, obviously, you can't develop without approval, but I'm...
Right, yes, he's definitely gonna move forward on Track B, and getting the approvals first, but then moving forward on Track B.
Yes.
Might as well want us to get caught in a situation where, you know, we pulled off Track B because there was a problem with it, and they're just gonna let it sit there and continue to be a problem, and it's not gonna help the drainage in the area. But it sounds like to me, from your answers, my question is, is that's not gonna happen?
No, that's not gonna happen. We're gonna, we, we've gotta have Track A, because, I mean, that's the existing building, but we, we have to have Track B too because of the traffic and the volume and everything else. So, we, we're gonna move forward on it, just however we can work it out with the city and the highway department.
Okay. Thank you for working with us.
Okay.
You understand that, Ms. Dugan?
I understand that you're gonna work it out in North Little Rock, but are, I mean, they were already gonna do this before Loves magically burned, let's be honest. You know, I'm, I'm just saying. And, but, but whether they get B or not, we've still had trouble when it was just A.
Well...
And, and, and I'm just, I'm seeking something to get that water off of me, is...
Yes, Ms. White?
And, and unless I'm just reading this wrong, it actually states that in A, that the stormwater design report for review and approval by the city engineer and stormwater plans and detention calculations are to be approved by the city engineers and drainage submitted, and I'm talking about Track A.
And have they been?
Track A?
Until this process goes through, no. I mean, it's, we're, this has got to get approved first before they go ahead and start the process.
But I've never...
They won't get a building permit until all that's done.
Well, can I, can I be involved when that happens? Because like I say, I didn't know any of this was happening, and I've never spoken in front of a council or anything, I'm nervous as a cat.
I think you're already involved because you talked to the mayor, so...
Well, is there a way of notification to her if there's gonna be a meeting about the, the city engineer's department in this, anything?
The mayor stated the city engineer's, there, she's involved.
Okay, well, you just need to stay with the mayor.
All right. Thank you very much. I'm, I'm sorry to take so much time, I just...
Did a good job. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Okay, very good.
We did not vote on, we did not vote on item I.
We have not finished yet.
No, we, item I was, you know, Development Review Committee recommends approval, you asked for public comment, we've been in public comment.
That's correct. This is saying Track A and B, Sean?
The, the B part is, just for one, if we need to sign the plat, for some reason, it gives me permission to sign the plat, was not gonna allow any construction. If we need to, if we need to determine a detention pond or something by an easement, it's gonna allow me to do that.
Okay. Okay. Any other comments from commissioners? All in, or on the application as submitted, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item J, SD 2018-38 Calvary Edition, Lot 2, site plan review of parking lot located at 1401 Calvary Road. The applicant was present, agreed to items one through five and subsections, and with that, the Development Review Committee recommends approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, be approved as submitted. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to make any comments? Mr. White?
Help, help me out on this. They've built so many parking lots on the side of that hill, is this one, is this...
The west.
I know, but the west has already been built. There's a west of that parking lot, it's already, so has this already been done, and now they're just saying, forgive me?
So, it's a, yeah. Okay. I, I think that's gotta end sometime, you know, whether it's a church, whether it's a, this forgive-me-later deal, and then we come back and say, it's not a hillside cut, but in reality, you look at the apartments that are being built off of north hills, you can't tell me that's not a hillside cut, because it looks horrible. But these have got to start coming in, or the city has got to put more, more protection to the deal, because that was just kind of built, and I don't know why they want it anyway, because they got all that other parking lot, and ninety percent of the time, it's not full. And I love the church, and I think it's beautiful, but this is just a good example, people just kind of take the city rules for, for granted. And so, so we don't have a choice but to approve this, because it's already been done. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay.
I mean, you could deny it and require the return it all back to forest and all, I mean, you can, you can, we could do that, but I, it's just kind of pointless.
Sean, it meets all the requirements, is that correct?
Yes. I mean, once, once it's good approved, there, I think there's a couple improvements that they need to meet, but it will meet the requirements.
But at the same time, when I'm having, do they already have B? Do they already have C? Do they already have D?
No, and that's why this needs to be approved for them to get that.
But even the highway department hasn't, or the state of Arkansas hasn't approved,
But even the highway department having, or the state of Arkansas having, but it's already been done.
Correct. Yeah, I'm agreeing with you.
Once again, we can, we can deny it and require they tear it all out and put it all back to trees.
No, and I'm going further than I do, it seems like code enforcement drawing around the city would say, I don't think they're supposed to be doing that.
It happened over a weekend.
Do what?
It happened over a weekend.
Which again?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
We don't fund code enforcement officers over the weekend.
No, no, but that's the point is, is people know they can take advantage of this.
And if I may, Kisa, please include that Commissioner Clifton did not participate at all in the discussion of this item at the Design Review Committee.
Any other comments from the commissioners? On the application as submitted, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
One. Aye.
And also, please show that I did not participate in the discussion or the vote on this application.
Next, item K is S.D. twenty-seventeen dash fourteen, Giles Subdivision, Track One, R Block Five, Re-Plat and Site Plan Review of a Commercial Lot Located at one-one-one-two West Ninth Street. Applicant was present, agreed to items one through twelve and subsections, and with that, Development Review Committee recommends approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, be approved as submitted. Anyone in the audience would like to speak on this application? Any comments made to commissioners? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
And that concludes the Development Review Committee Report, which I believe, for the first time, was longer than the actual meeting.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chambers. We will move into our public hearing. Item number one is a conditional use, number twenty-eighteen dash four, to allow a car sales lot in a C-four zone located at thirty-one twenty-five Pike Avenue. Is the applicant here? Please come up and give us your name for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Mauro. And, wow.
Okay, you participated in the Design Review Committee's meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
And have you been provided with a list of the conditions to be considered?
Yes.
Do you agree with all of those conditions?
Yes, sir.
Agreed to do those?
Yes.
Okay. Has there been any comments from the public about this, Mr. Spencer?
We have not received any.
Okay. Mr. Chambers?
Mr. Spencer, in the meeting, there was extensive discussion of the quality, type, and location of the fencing. And is that, is that carefully spelled out in the conditions?
Black eight...
Black chain link, and shown as where it is on the drawing.
But across the frontage of the property, along Pike Avenue, we weren't gonna, were we gonna allow black chain link there?
I was not at the meeting.
Yes.
Tim, can you refresh my memory? As I recall, there was a bar and chain area, and they were gonna display cars out front behind the bar and chain, and then, at night, they could move everything back behind the black chain link. That was going to go, I guess, from the corner at Pike Avenue and the railroad to the building.
So, the black chain link is gonna go on the drawing where the highlighted part is?
I'm sorry, proper...
It's on the back...
The very back page, is where the black chain link fence is allowed to go.
I'm getting there. Got it, okay. Yes, I see it. And they can do a bar and chain out along, in the front area to display the vehicles, and then, for security, move them back behind the chain link.
Correct.
That works for me just fine.
Okay. Anyone in the audience would like to speak on this application? Any comments from the commissioners? On the application, please call the roll.
Blasko?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Dietz?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Chairman Clifton?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Your application did pass, see Mr. Spencer, and he can tell you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's still one more step. There's still one more step, and Mr. Spencer can tell you about.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you everywhere.
If you, we'll move to item number four, special use case number twenty-eighteen dash nine, I'm sorry, it's been postponed, item number three, to allow a termite and pest control business in a C-one zone located at fifty-three oh seven JFK Boulevard. Give us your name for the record, please.
Yes, sir, my name is Jay Heflin with Legacy Termite and Pest Control.
Yes, sir. Have you been provided with a copy of the Design Review Committee Recommendations?
Yes, sir, I have.
And are you in agreement with those?
We are, yes. I did have one question about the signage, just to make sure that we understood. The signage on property now is a pole with a sign, this is telling us that we need to remove that and put a monument sign in place?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, we're in agreement with all conditions.
And he will have to get a permit for that, will he not?
Correct, yeah. So, this is a reminder that there's an ordinance that says that.
Okay.
So, we're just reminding you that there is a standalone ordinance that tells you you have to do that.
Sounds good, need all the reminders we can get.
Okay, thank you. Any, any comments, anyone in the audience on this application? Any comments made to commissioners? Yes, sir.
The outdoor mixing area, can you kind of explain that?
Well, yes, so, we mix our products at our vehicles. We do that primarily, actually, at the residences or the commercial sites that we service, but some early morning mixing is done at the site before we go to our first stop. And that's primarily a termite treatment type of a mixing, so it's done right there at the side of the building. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. Anyone else have a comment on this? Any comments made to commissioners? On the application, Ms. Kisa, please call the roll.
Blasko?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Dietz?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Chairman Clifton?
Yes. The application did pass, see Mr. Spencer, and he can tell you what you should do next.
Super. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Next item of business is our public comment section, item one. Mr. White?
Do you think it would be possible for the city engineer to come to our next meeting? I think, I think we could get some answers on the runoff, and that apartment area that they're building, they put a road in, and it just goes. And you can't tell me that that's not a hillcut, and you can't tell me that we're not gonna have a flooding problem on north hills, because we almost have a flooding problem anyway, and they just built the land up in one area, the floods closer to the Lakewood, and I'm really concerned, once this thing is done, we're gonna go, uh-oh, because they mowed down every tree that they could mow down. They've cut into that side, they're still cutting into that side, and again, a hillside cut is a hillside cut, and when it go just like this, because you can watch the machine do it, it's a hillside cut, any way you look at it. So, I'd like the city engineer, because that's my area where I live in, and it's an area that I think we should protect, but that area, you know, the lady was talking about flooding, we have big-time flood, flooding issue, and there's only one place for that to go, and that's through the Redwood Tunnel. And it is not big enough, because they've taken, I mean, this is gonna be all asphalt. And there's, you know, when we have those big rains, it's not gonna hold, and you're gonna have the interstate underwater, in my opinion, but I'm not an engineer, and you're gonna have north hills underwater between what comes off of Lake Number One, now that it's full and fixed, but there's still a lot of water moving through there. And it's gonna be right there at that bridge, because, again, like the young lady said, we probably hadn't cleaned that bridge, the highway department, since I was born. That was fifty-four, because it's, it's, it's bad now. So, I would like the city engineer, maybe one time, every once in a while, to come to our meeting so we can ask these questions, because I don't think it's fair to the people, just like the lady was here today. I mean, bottom line, I'm not an engineer, I have no idea if they're gonna fix that, or will fix her, if it can be fixed. But I'd like to hear from the engineer that say, yes, you know, we can help, we can't fix it.
Sean, did the Corps of Engineers not approve all that? Drainage?
Yes, they have approved it.
Yeah, I saw their truck out there today, you know, out building the, I guess, the road and the bridge, which is gonna be, look like it's gonna be about fifteen feet wide where the Easter had about fifteen-inch diameter pipe draining it, so, the pipe's gonna be significant.
I'll have Chris, and maybe he can do a report on the water issues in that area for you.
Yes, that would be great.
Do a little fifteen-minute report or something.
That'd be great. Because he does a great job, but I'd just like to, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
In that same area, I've had a couple of, well, three or four folks ask if that's all gonna be apartments, and I can't remember.
Yes, it is.
It came in, and was there any resident, or...
There's a breakfast facility and all that, but it's all...
No, I meant, were they gonna tear down any of the existing, that's, so it's just gonna add that new...
There'll be nine hundred new ones.
That's what I, I thought, that there was nothing else but apartments, but I thought, I better not comment.
It's in three phases, and they're just doing all the grading at once.
Right.
That's why it looks so dramatically...
Yeah, it's, people are just in shock. They see it, and they're like, what the hell?
Mr. Chambers?
Globally speaking, not site, not project specifically speaking, but to address Mr. White's comment, can we ask the Director of Code Enforcement to come in so we can find out if there's any way of catching projects before they happen? Anything we can do?
That's not necessarily a code. I mean, but it's whoever is out there sees it happens.
So, in other words, we should actually, if we see something, we should just call you and let you direct it to where it needs to go?
Yes, I mean, we'll send the building inspector out and put a stop work on it, so it's not really a code issue, it's the building, building inspector issue.
I understand, I understand, being project specific, I understand how the church thing happened, but for the longest time, I just thought it was a road going to the billboard, you know, I didn't think it was a parking area, but anyway.
And just to answer your question, what you're supposed to do on the weekend, it, what I was told, because on Lakeview, a guy mowed down all of his trees illegally, even though some of them were in his yard, all the way down to Lake Number One, and then